Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 10th, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting. Tonight, I'm Scott Lammert. Tonight, I'm joined on my right Vice Chairman Rich Orlow, and on my left Sue Drummond, and many staff members are with us this evening. During general comments, if you would please raise your hand, and Donna Weichert will assist you, give your name and your address for any questions that you may have during the general comment section that we do not have a topic on the agenda for, you can raise at that point in time. So at this point in time, I'd like to have us do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual, liberty, and justice.
I'd like to begin with Board Briefing Section, item number two on the agenda. Executive sessions were held on October 27th at 12:30 for real estate, legal, and personal issues, and on November 10th at 5:00 PM. We have a board briefing pertaining to the mailing of proposed sewer sale letters to the East Whiteland customers. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We continue to do our-
Once all the deficiencies have been cured, then the PUC will officially accept the sale application, and then there's a six-month clock that the PUC follows, and at the end of that clock, the PUC will determine their position on the sale, which at this point will likely be sometime around June of next year. In the meantime, we've been continuing to do diligence. There are a number of public notices that have to happen and will likely happen over the next month. There's one notice that will probably first go out, and it's to all of the ratepayers across the country for both water and sewer for Aqua's customers. That will give an indication of what the estimated rate increase will be to those customers, so those costs will be spread amongst the entire country. And then second will be a combined notice. Aqua has a notice that it will send out jointly with our notice. That is really a worst-case scenario of what the rates could look like if those costs can't be spread out past the East Whiteland boundaries. Very unlikely to happen, and that's why it's called the worst-case scenario. And then we have our own notice letter that's in almost final form that will indicate a much lower expected rate increase, and we're actually, based on the analysis that's been done by our consultant, PFM, the rate increases over 10 years will actually be less than if we retain the system because we have a significant amount of capital improvements that have to happen over the next 10 years. So there are two main reasons. It's a $55 million sale. There's two main reasons why the township board back a year ago, in November, approved the sewer sale. First, that Aqua has greater financial resources and professional expertise needed to operate and provide long-term investment in our sewer system, especially with the environmental regulatory compliance matters. The risk associated with failure of portions of the system and cost to fund major capital projects is significant. Just it's important to note, our system was built over 50 years ago and needs significant upgrades to meet current standards. Over the next 10 years, system improvements are estimated to exceed $15 million. The second reason is to improve our financial situation and fund essential projects without taking on additional debt. We would pay down the existing sewer debt of over $16 million. We would pay off the existing public works debt of over $7 million. And by eliminating existing debt and avoiding the risk of future sewer debt, the township will solidify our financial future. The township will then be able to use the remaining proceeds of sales to fund other important projects. Some of these projects include a new police station, renovations to our current administration building, possible acquisition of open space, improvements to parks and trails, road projects to improve traffic flow, store more to management and maintenance of historical resources. Under the agreement with Aqua Sewer, rates will not increase for three years. After that, any increases in rates will be based on the cost to provide services to customers, similar to how the township would determine rates if it kept the current system. And then there's an explanation in the letter of how the rate structure would be determined. I'm going to leave that out until we actually get the final language on that because we're still working on that. While the township sets its own rates, Aqua rates must be reviewed and approved by the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission, which requires that increases be reasonable and just while also taking into consideration gradualism. In addition, the Pennsylvania Office of Consumer Affairs has created a requirement that Aqua inform the public of the worst-case rate scenario, which I referred to a few minutes ago, which is disclosed in a letter that Aqua is currently drafting. These are not the anticipator rates. I want to repeat that. The worst-case scenario rates are not the anticipator rates. Aqua, in coming up with their $55 million bid, Aqua calculated an indicative rate scenario that township used when considering Aqua's bid. The bottom line, over a 10-year period based on increasing operational capital costs, Aqua rates are projected to be noticeably less than township rates would be over the same period. Resulting net benefit to the average resident from the sale to Aqua is approximately over $600 over the next 10 years. And in summation and reading from the draft letter that should be going out soon, in summary, the township assessed the risk of keeping the system, recognized the benefit of the sale, and determined it was best interest of the residents and the township and the businesses to sell the sewer system to a larger experienced utility. And then we'll have full disclosure of this information on our website. We already have a portion of the website dedicated to the proposed sewer sale, and there'll be some additional information provided after this letter has been approved by the board. So that's really the update on the sewer sale notice to the East Whiteland customers.
Thanks, John.
Sure.
Glad you were on your toes there. I went out of order for you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Also, tonight, we would like to comment and honor our veterans for Veterans Day tomorrow. America has really the greatest armed forces in the history of the world, and to those who serve, and those who serve alongside them, their families and their caregivers, we owe a debt we can never really fully repay for their services. During National Veterans and Military Families Month, we would like to recognize and thank them for their contributions and immeasurable sacrifices in support of our national security. So thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, for full disclosure, Donna pulled that off of the U.S. Veterans Administration website.
Okay. Also, tonight, we have a performance recognition award that was given to the township on behalf of our Workers' Compensation Trust, in that we received the award for exemplary achievements and leadership in minimizing the workplace injuries and illnesses during 2020. And we have a little award to give to John. Thank you. Absolutely. For you and the staff for everything you've done on that side, keeping us safe and productive.
Thank you, Scott. This is an appreciation for all the employees, especially department heads. As everyone knows, this was an extremely difficult year with the pandemic, and we're putting ourselves out in the line, especially with the first responders. So this is quite an achievement for the staff.
Thank you. On a sadder note, Chris Jaeger, if you would be able to comment on the passing of Officer Josh Mickham in West Town in East Goshen, and we go.
I'll do it from the mic. It's probably easier. I wanted to stand anyway. So on October 31st, we had one of our neighboring township police departments lost an officer. He was a six-year veteran of the police department there. His name was Josh Miken. He has a wife, a daughter, and a son. He was 37 years old, so he was way too young. He died of a COVID-related illness. Very unfortunate to have that happen at this point in this COVID pandemic, if you will. But he was, everyone said he was constantly a smiling person. They called him a foodie because he loved to cook and brought in food and did all these things. So as recently as 2019, his peers chosen to be the Officer of the Year, which in an department that size, to be able to get that recognition in two or three years tells you something about him. So he's leaving his legacy. The FOP is doing as much as they can to help him out, but if we could, I'd just like to have a moment of silence for him and his family.
Next on the agenda would be the board motion and resolutions, and we will be looking at Osha and John to run through any additions on the approval for the 2022 preliminary budget.
Mr. Chairman, my comments will be very brief. I'm going to hand it over to Osha to go through the PowerPoint slides, but the staff's done a great job with Osha's leadership guiding them through this budget process for 2022. We're presenting the budget to you with a surplus, a modest surplus, but we've been able to sustain our services even through a pandemic, and we'll be able to, we're pleased to be able to present this to you with the same conditions for 2022.
So due to our legal obligation, we have to incorporate all our important dates in our budget process. Some of them we have been through already, and after today's meeting will be, the last one will be on December 8th. So it's just the dates, important dates in the budget. We have to put that in our document. This is our total revenue. You see, in total, we are 15% better than last year. Last year, in 2021, we have $12,738,000 versus 2022, almost 15 million, and an increase of 15%. That is mainly due to earned income tax. Last year, we had a budget of $7.5 million versus this year, $10.3 million, if you look in the earned income tax on the top, an increase of 27.5%. And that is because last year, we had projected a loss of 10% in our revenue due to pandemic, but that did not happen. So based on our current real data, also assuming COVID is almost behind us, we are budgeting 10.3 million, a 27, almost 28% increase in earned income tax. If you look at our local service taxes, there is a small increase there as well, and that's our projection is 1.3 million versus last year, 1.2 million, and that's, we are projecting based on real numbers. If you look in the real estate transfer tax and building permit tax, we are keeping our number very flat because we not anticipating any major project for 2022. Real estate property taxes are up by 8.2% compared to last year, and that's projection is based on our real numbers. Other revenue is all other revenue. There are many names. If anybody need detail, I can provide it. So that's all there. So as you can see, because of those, our total revenue is up by 15% compared to last year. This is just to give you a better visual presentation where our revenue come from and the percentage of revenue of the total revenue. So you see the major, almost 69% to 70% revenue come from earned income tax, 9% from local service taxes, and building permits and real estate both at 3%, 11% in all other, 5% in real estate. So just to see the major source of revenue we have, we have from earned income tax. We are moving on to total expenditure. I'll go in just total. You see, we are 6.8% up compared to last year, and that is mainly due to labor cost for our contract. So that's the only thing is there, is a small increase. This is again to show you the cost allocation by department. You can see what department consumes, what percent of our total cost. See, Police Department had 43%, Public Works 14, Course Life and Safety, that includes Fire Department as well, that 21%, Administration and Public 14, Recreation 1, their services 3, Planning and Zoning 4%. This is the narrative I just spoke about when I was talking about revenue slides. So you can read that, and if you need anything more, I can provide in detail. So this is basically same thing what I said. Expenditure, I did cover the labor cost, but I will pinpoint at medical insurance, pension, and OPEB. Medical insurance due to our negotiation that happened two years ago. We are saving significantly, and we, because with this contract for a couple of years, we are keeping our rate as prior year. So our budget is going to be same as 2021. For pension, because of the cost of our asset has gone up, and we had a better investment performance, we have a saving of 87K compared to last year in pension. OPEB, which is retired benefit for retirees, we keeping our budget same as last year, a Overtime is very moderate and continue to be moderate, and that's due to pandemic, but also department heads like Fire and Police Department, they are doing good job keeping their cost down. So based on that, we are keeping our budget for overtime same as last year. Information technology, we have contracted Alcover to take care of our information technology department, and for 2021, the cost going to be the same. We are in the process of negotiating our 2022 cost with them. So our budget going to be somewhere there last year. We are budgeting 372K in our, to replace our vehicle and equipment for 2022. Debt services, we have $7.1 million in our outstanding non-swear debt we are budgeting for, and we're not talking about sewer fund right now, but to show you total picture, I wanted to put that 507K in sewer fund debt. As of now, we have a bottom line, I mean surplus of 234K for 2022 versus 1 million of deficit of 2021. This slide just to show you how strong we are financially. Our fund balance as of December 28th, 2020, I mean December 2020, total fund balance a bit higher than 20 million, so we are very strong financially. So we can assure you that based on our performance in expense, revenue, and our fund balance, we are in a position of providing you the community-based service that we have been doing in the near future. This is by department, but in a total, we are, we have 68.1% full-time and part-time workforce as of now. That's it. Any question?
Rich, any questions?
Yeah, I know. I mean, we saw this through the work sessions.
Yeah, and if you have any question, you can send me email. I can provide you any detail you want. So I have everything.
Can you guarantee that surplus at the end of 2022?
No.
It'll be higher.
If you sell the sewer, then half of that will be gone, so can, but we depend, you know, assuming everything.
Right. Past performance is not a guarantee of future performance. The other thing I'll mention that Osha alluded to is now this budget is, once the board votes and approves it, it'll be on display until the next board meeting. It'll give the public a chance to review it either on the website or in person here, and then there'll be a discussion at the December board meeting where the board will consider a final approval of the 2022 budget.
Okay. Thank you, Osha. Rich, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve 2022 preliminary budget.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. John, would you like to give us a recap on the dividend renewal?
Yes, as the board knows, last year, we did the same, the board took the same type of action with the reserves that the Delaware Valley Health Trust has with respect to our health insurance. They allowed us some additional rate structuring credits and also credits for providing multiple lines of insurance, not just the health trust, but the property liability and the workers' comp. So we'll be all, if the board agrees to this two-year option, which is we, the rates are, and the credits are frozen for another two years in exchange for keeping, staying with the trust, which has been a very beneficial option for health insurance for the township. That's really the deal that's been offered, and that the staff is recommending to continue that two-year option.
Certainly don't see any negativity with that going forward for two years. Sue, can you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 DVHT renewal for two years.
Rich, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes.
Great.
And Rich, if we can, we have a resolution for new permanent zoning hearing board member?
Yes, as a result of, I think it was Mr. Samuel moving out of the township, there was a vacancy created, and I'd make a motion to appoint and approve Resolution 39 to put Kathleen Laubenstein as a zoning hearing board member.
Sue, do you have a second?
Yeah, Kathleen's been the alternate, so we're just moving her up to a permanent position. Yeah.
Correct. Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Official Kathleen. Next, Steve Brown, if you can give us a little brief background on the new 501(c)(3).
Yeah, this is just simply the board needs to select the name. As we've discussed at a couple of meetings this year, the 501(c)(3) would be created to support park and recreational activities. And the township and the board authorized us to proceed with the creation of that organization, and we're currently doing that with the Solicitor's Office. The first decision that needs to be made so we can file the paperwork with the state is the name. The Park and Rec Board recommends what is on your agenda, which is the Friends of East Whiteland Parks and Recreation. So if the board is okay with that, please approve it, and then we can finish up the paperwork for the state.
Sure. Rich, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to approve the name of the Friends of East Whiteland Parks and Recreation for the 501(c)(3) organization to support East Whiteland Parks.
Sue, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Donna, I've been remiss. Any comments so far coming in?
No, there hasn't been any.
Okay. Thank you. Next on our agenda is for Steve Brown pertaining to traffic calming policy.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. Chris Williams from McMahon Associates hopes to join us fairly soon, so he may be on now, I don't know. I see Donna saying it doesn't look like it, which is fine. McMahon was instrumental in helping our traffic committee put together a draft policy, and as the board is aware, but the public may not be aware, the traffic committee meets monthly. It's well-attended by staff. You have representatives of the Police Department, Public Works Department, Planning and Zoning, and Administration, and representatives from McMahon. The policy that is before you is the culmination of a lot of work, a lot of discussion. It's been modeled on the PennDOT traffic calming guidelines in their manual, as well as other model community municipal policies, and of course, input from the traffic committee, and the committee recommended this policy last spring, this past spring. The policy is pretty comprehensive. It sets forth traffic calming goals, principles. It goes into eligibility for what streets need to meet minimum criteria to be eligible, location guidelines for the actual physical structures that may be built. It states that we have to consider emergency services and not negatively impact the delivery of those services. Also states that we have to address ADA. Then there's quite an elaborate process. I think it's seven, actually eight steps, that I won't go through all the steps, but it starts with a request from a neighborhood. It involves an initial survey of that neighborhood, review and discussion by the committee, preparation of options, and then there'd be a second survey of the neighborhood, and then ultimately the board would decide whether to install traffic calming. The policy is proposed because we do get requests from time to time. I think mostly the Police Department fields these requests, and up until this time, we've just not had a policy to guide the review process. So that's it. That's a broad overview. Again, there's a lot of detail in here, and I'll see what questions you may have. Again, there's a lot of detail in here, and I'll see what questions you may have.
Does this have the force of law? This is not being passed in the form of an ordinance, so is this is just a guideline, pretty much?
That's my understanding, it's not an ordinance, it's a, it's a policy that the board...
So if one, if one person from one neighborhood asks for something, they wouldn't necessarily have to go through eight steps if it's a simple thing.
Right, being, as it's a policy, the, the board could not follow it if the board chose not to, and I would hope if it was really simple, we would utilize our...
There's Chris.
Oh, there's Chris. We'd utilize our judgment in that case, but this anticipates, you know, a neighborhood effort and, you know, probably multiple installations of calming devices, and that would involve more input and more support for the project to move forward, because not everyone favors the installation of speed humps and chicanes and narrowing of streets and things like that.
And so it would ultimately, if a request is made, be in the decision of this board, whether to require following or the traffic committee?
But the, the way the policy is written, much of the heavy lifting is done by the traffic committee, but the ultimate decision is by the board of supervisors.
Okay, all right, okay.
And it involves public input and public meetings, you know, throughout the process.
Sure, okay. Yeah, this, this, this policy kind of came about to become more formal than what we had previously on the books, is during the period of time when we ended up working with Carol Lane concerning, and what, it went through a lot of, a lot of changes, a lot of discussions. Chris, as you know, you certainly chairman that, but what was, I think, great about it, it gives a formal process, it gives them some strong guidelines, again, followed by the DEP protocols, but it also gives some flexibility, so that, that if there are things that need to be altered off of that, there's that flexibility. Would you have any other comments about the whole traffic calming guidance?
So I apologize for being a few minutes late, I'm not sure how much you got into it.
You didn't get much.
No, okay, so, you know, it, it's intended to be an objective process, obviously, traffic calming, there's a lot of emotion behind it, people generally end up on one side of the issue or the other, and it can be sort of difficult process to navigate. So this process is based on objective criteria, it's based on guidance that comes from PennDOT, and the intent is to make it a very public and in community, a process that, for which the community is very engaged through the process, but at the end of the day, the, the guidance and the principles that we follow are based on information that was prepared and endorsed by PennDOT, so it lends sort of some, some objectivity, as opposed to subjectivity through this process. What's, what's interesting about traffic calming is, you know, you'll, you'll very often see neighborhood groups that will bring an issue to the township, they, they want to slow down speeding, or they want to prevent people from cutting through their neighborhood, but the harsh reality of traffic calming is whatever's eventually installed, not only is it the people that live outside of the community that have to adhere to the traffic calming devices, but the people within the community have to adhere to the traffic calming devices as well, and that can be a harsh reality. And so this process really tries to make it, again, objective, it's based on PennDOT guidance, it involves the community throughout the process, and what I like about this is there are clear decision points in the process where the community has to express their support, and if there is not a certain level of support, at a certain point in the process, the process stops, and then there's no reason to continue through the process any further. And it's very clear, it's in black and white, as to, you know, what level of support is needed in order, in order for the process to continue. Now, there is, throughout this process, there is the ability for the township and the supervisors to make its own decision, if it determines to be what's in the best interest of public safety, and that is a theme that's carried throughout this process as well. So although it is very objective, and it's based on PennDOT, and it involves the community, ultimately, the authority is with the township and with the supervisors to do what's right in terms of public safety, also to do what's right in terms of managing costs, available funds, and that sort of thing as well. So obviously, there are realities to our ability to implement traffic calming devices, but there's a lot to it, it, you know, at the end of the day, it, it is a process that I think will give the township boundaries that can be followed, and it, it allows the community to understand that there is a, really an objective process to follow.
Are there any, from your involvement with the traffic committee monthly, are there any currently outstanding traffic calming requests from any neighborhood in the township that would fit into this policy?
There are not, there are no requests that have come forward that, that I'm aware of. We have had some interest in maybe a quasi-traffic calming matter, but it's on a, in a private community with private roads, so it really wouldn't apply. There are eligibility criteria that have to be met, one of those criteria is, in order for this to be, to move through the process, these have to be on roads that are largely residential, roads that are township-owned, and really, roads that are of a certain functional classification that make them a lower-order street. In other words, we wouldn't consider traffic calming on Route thirty, for example. So, so there, again, there is criteria that have to be met in order to move forward, but to answer your question, no, there, there are no requests that I'm aware of on public roads.
Can I, can I interject, because you don't know this yet?
Uh-oh.
We had our, we're having our meeting next week, we had to skip this week because of the holiday and all this stuff going on, but we do have two requests, and they are both in Summit and Carol Lane areas for, that we're doing surveys for right now, so there are two.
Those are continuation, I guess, of what has already occurred there, right? In some fashion?
Um, yes.
Okay.
We can use some of the information from the prior ones, but the ones further down Carol Lane, and the other ones a lot further down Summit Road, so there'll be their own information coming from each of those.
Okay.
I will add that, that this, this, these principles and goals, I think, championed our discussions during the period of time with Carol Lane and Summit, and up until last week, I've heard nothing but good things about what we ended up implementing, and we're finalizing those in one little area, so I think it's road-tested at this point in time.
Yeah, that example was a little bit of a, a test for this process.
Yeah.
There are elements to this process that are maybe a little bit more robust than what we did in that situation, but I think what we learned in that situation helped inform what eventually led to this process, so yeah, a lot of similarities.
Yep.
My only comment on it, I'm not opposed to the process, I was aware of everything that was going on, but reading it and looking at, how many pages is it, eight, ten pages of procedure for traffic calming? How many things are there in this township that we are now going to want to have a policy of equal detail? I mean, traffic calming is this kind of an issue, not to say it isn't important, but there must be a hundred things that this township does, and we don't have policies on, like this, on anything. I mean, is this the start of, are we going to have to have community surveys on everything that comes up? I don't know. It, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just saying, what are we getting into with having these massive detailed community survey response percentage steps committees, you know?
That's why I asked the question earlier.
Yeah, this is, this is, are we open Pandora's box here with, you know?
Is this in the category of too much government?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, right.
Time will tell, I guess, right? It's one thing to have a policy, it's another thing to implement it.
And, and then what, what next, you know, you, well, this is what you do on traffic calming, what about lights? What about noise? What about pets? What about chickens in the backyard? You know, how many surveys are we going to have to have, and how many percentage of the people in the neighborhood are going to be okay with chickens?
I, I wouldn't give many ideas.
I was just thinking. I don't know, I'm not going to oppose it, I'm just saying, let's be careful where we're going here, okay? I don't need, and I'm sure, I'm out of here shortly, guys, so it's going to be on you to have ten-page policies on everything that comes up, so be careful what you ask for.
Any comments, Donna, or public? Sue, can we...
I don't think I'll make the motion on this one.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve it with the understanding and hope and belief that it be addressed and enforced reasonably under all circumstances, and having a degree of flexibility.
Do you have a second?
Marginally.
I'll give it a firm second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes. Thanks, Chris. Steve Brown, if you can give us a brief background here on our matching fund grant?
Yeah, this is, again, what it sounds like from reading the agenda, it's a, it's a grant to PICO for the Green Region Open Space Program for tree planting in Becton Hill Park. It's a, it's a match where we would put up ten thousand dollars to get a second ten thousand dollars for a total of twenty to plant trees in the new Becton Hill Park. This is an application that Brittany Caricella prepared, and there's a Resolution Number forty that is needed to send in with the application.
Don't see anything negative pertaining to that. Any questions? Rich, can you, I'll entertain a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution forty, authorizing the application to the PICO Green Region Open Space Program for the Becton Hill Park Tree Planning Project, and commitment of matching funds not to exceed ten thousand. As I read the PICO Green, I think of the PICO Power Play under the Flyers games.
Let's go Flyers. Do you have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. John Neeld, our favorite topic pertaining trucks?
Yeah, these next two items are trucks. The first is asking for approval to purchase a two thousand twenty-two F-five-fifty that will replace one of our older trucks that's almost eleven years old. The total cost is ninety-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars, that's inclusive of the truck and all equipment that goes with it, snowplow spreader, everything. And the breakdowns there, it's New Holland Auto, which is a Co-Stars vendor, for the fifty thousand three hundred, and E.M. Kutts, which is a Co-Star vendor, for forty-seven thousand nine.
Okay, any questions?
Can you just, these two together, can you just put in layman's language what we're buying? Are we buying two snowplows? What are we buying?
Yeah, it's replacement of two dump trucks.
Two dump trucks that have a plow on the front?
Exactly.
How come this, okay, they're just two different brands?
Uh, two different brands, two different sizes. The five-fifty is a smaller truck, and the other truck is a Freightliner, which is one of our larger trucks.
Okay.
And that's going to be replacing a twelve-year-old Ford that we have.
Okay, so we're getting a big dump truck with a plow and a medium-sized dump truck with a plow?
Exactly.
Okay, I'm good with that.
And the, and the, and the trucks we're replacing, are they going to be going out for sale on Co-Stars?
Yeah, and, you know, normally, these trucks take a while, now they're going to take even longer, it's going to be probably a year before we see these, so.
Oh, yeah, to get, to get them, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow. Are these, you know, are these budgeted under still our two thousand twenty-one numbers?
Yes, these are in our two thousand twenty-one, but these are firm prices that we have, and it falls within the budget number that we had.
Okay.
And in the budget that we talked about tonight, you'll see the increases.
Right.
That F-five-fifty has gone from ninety-eight thousand to a hundred and five thousand.
Okay.
We're not purchasing a big truck next year, so we haven't even gotten a quote on that, so.
And the useful life is about the ten-to-twelve-year range?
For the five-fifties, we go ten years, and the larger trucks, we go twelve.
Okay, all right.
These are both brand-new?
These will be brand-new, yes.
Brand-new, yeah.
Okay.
Can I do one now? All right. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a two thousand twenty-two F-five-fifty, I'm not reading the rest of it. Can I do it second at the same time?
Sure.
And approve the purchase of a twenty, I don't know why, it could be a two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three model year Freightliner M-two one oh six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to Steve Brown again, with the Becton Hill Park information?
Yeah, thank you, Scott. Excuse me, we put the site work for the new Becton Hill Park out to bid, we received seven bids, and they were opened on November one. You should have a tabulation of the seven bids from the different contractors and the cost for the various work items. The bids ranged from slightly less than one point five million up to over two point one million. Arrow has reviewed it, and John Neeld also took a look at the, the bid tabs, as did I, and we all concur that we recommend that the bid be awarded to the low bidder. I don't know if it's MECO or MECO Constructors, they're experienced, they've built parks in our area, they've done a lot of big projects, they've actually done some work for Vanguard here in the township, and so we recommend the award to them in the amount of one million four hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
And I understand from the, the bid process, there is a penalty for, or there is a limited period of time for them to complete the work, otherwise there are penalties associated with them?
That's correct.
Okay.
This isn't just site work, it includes the timber pavilion, pedestrian path, driveway parking, it's not just moving the dirt around to make it level.
Yeah, you're right, Rich, it's the way this project worked out, it's everything other than the installation of the playground and the playground playing surface, so the benches and trees and pedestrian path, right, exactly.
Is this pretty much in the ballpark of what was anticipated or estimated in the, you know, beginning stages of this project? I forget, I think it is.
Unfortunately, it is not.
No.
Our estimate was, the prices came in higher than our estimate, the, our estimate, I think, was dated last year, twenty twenty, and because of supply chain issues, current cost escalation.
Yeah, the, the last estimate was about three hundred thousand dollars less, so this, this bid is about twenty-five percent more than the latest estimate.
That's not bad with what's going on in the world now.
Yeah, we think it's, well, we discussed it, we think it's a reasonable increase.
Yeah.
And any delay would only going to cause a increase, I would think, based on what's going on?
And the timeline to construction start and construction completion about?
We're looking at starting construction in March of next year, and completing, plannings would go in September of next year.
Okay, and by the end of, or by the beginning of fall also, that's when the playground and equipment will come in, or is that pushed into the next year?
No, that'll be coordinated with the site contractor.
Okay.
Depending on how they want to work it, it may come in, it may be concurrent with the site work.
Okay.
Otherwise, it may wait, at least until most of the site work is complete.
But next year?
But next year, yes.
Okay, all right, good.
Does this bid, or does this plan still have a restroom included?
No, this, this phase does not.
So that comes with the playground? When does that come in?
Well, the Park and Rec Board is very anxious to start planning Phase Two, but that would be a Phase Two.
So you get a bathroom with Phase Two? So you get a bathroom with Phase 2?
Correct.
Okay.
This phase is providing the utilities, providing water, sanitary sewer, electric back to the park.
So we're getting the pipes in, we're just not putting the facility in?
That's correct.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions from the public, Donna?
No, Mr. Scott.
Any other questions? Rich, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to approve the site work bid from MECO Constructors for Phase 1 of the Bacton Hill Park.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Next, we move on to, I will turn over to Stephen L. and the public hearing.
All right, so at this time, actually, is the stenographer on?
Yes.
She ready?
Yes, she is.
She's good, okay. So at this time, I'd like to open the hearing for the conditional use application of 10 South Maillon Road. For the township, I'd like to offer the following exhibits. Township Exhibit 1 is a letter to the Daily Local News, Mark T. 1. Township Exhibit 2 is the proof of publication of legal notice, Mark T. 2. Township Exhibit 3 is a letter of notice to the Township Planning Commission, Mark T. 3. Township Exhibit 4 is the affidavit of posting, Mark T. 4. Township Exhibit 5 is the conditional use application with all of its attachments, Mark T. 5. Township Exhibit 6 are the letters of notice to the neighboring property owners, Mark T. 6. And Township Exhibit 7 is the legal notice itself, Mark T. 7.
Didn't we already see this?
So we saw it for 9 Maillon Road.
What's that?
We saw it for 9 South Maillon Road. This is 10 South Maillon Road.
Oh, this is on the other side of the street?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Okay, got it.
Yep. All right, is the applicant here tonight?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Jim Edelson, Senior Counsel at the law firm of Royer Cooper, Cohen &amp; Braunfeldt. I'm here representing 10 Maillon Road Associates, owner of a property located at 10 South Maillon Road in Malvern in East Whiteland Township. The 3.25 acre property is located at the end of South Maillon Road, I industrial zoning. Property is, for the most part, undeveloped. The applicant's proposing a plan to construct an 80-foot by 100-foot two-story building with an 8,000 square foot of warehouse space on the first floor and 3,000 square foot of office space on the second floor and an adjacent parking lot. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. I feel like I'm home and my wife's telling me, "Speak up, will you?" Um, we're here this evening seeking conditional use approval to grade within a portion of the on-site steep slope area to allow for the construction of a proposed new parking lot, retaining wall, and underground stormwater recharge system in accordance with the requirements for steep slope protection of Section 200-57-F4 of the East Whiteland zoning ordinance. The proposed building will not be located on the steep slope. In support of the application, you'll hear testimony tonight from the project's expert consultant confirming that the subject parking lot, as an integral part of the overall proposed site plan, meets and complies with the goals, objectives, and standards of subsection G, subsection H, section 200-57 of the zoning code, and that there are no existing practical alternative alignments or locations. As previously stated, the site is located in the recently rezoned I industrial district, the end of South Maillon Road, across from existing commercial and industrial sites, and it's accessed by Business Route 30. The applicant has recently appeared before the Township Planning Commission and also revised their plans to address concerns and comments, recommendations received from the township staff following their review. One of the conditions of their approval process is the subject of experience. As you'll see from the plan submitted and the testimony to follow on behalf of the applicant, the project is in line with the purpose and applicability of the East Whiteland Township zoning code, and in particular, meets the development standards of Section 200-43 and the I industrial district, and that the allowance of its request for this conditional use approval will not be contrary nor adversely affect public health, safety, and welfare. I'm joined this evening by John Robert Robinson, President of JMR Engineering, civil engineer of record. With your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call our.
Before you call your first witness, I'd like to open the floor up to anyone who wants to enter their appearance as a party in opposition to the application. Anyone mind? And also, I'd like to open the floor up to anyone to enter their appearance as a party to support the application. All right, seeing as there's no parties in opposition or support, would the board entertain a offer of proof instead of formal testimony?
That's fine.
All right, so, Counselor?
Then with your permission, I'd also like to just say, ask for the record that we stip to Mr. Robinson's expert qualifications, testified before us in the past.
Yep.
We know, Jack.
That's fine. He's testified before.
Actually, he noticed Site 2 from two months ago.
Yep.
Calling your attention to the exhibits, Mr. Robinson would testify that, under his supervision, the plans accurately, and the exhibits actually, fairly and accurately depict those of the subject application. He is familiar, and in preparation for this hearing, has reviewed the Township zoning code and the sections which are relevant to the application. So in his testimony, Mr. Robinson would say that the proposed use of the subject property is permitted in this district in accordance with the requirements and table of development standards of section 243, 200-43. He would say that this application falls within the provision of the code, specifically section 200-57-F4, which accords the applicant the right to seek conditional use approval to grade within the steep slope area on the subject property for the construction of a new parking lot. He would also testify that there would be no practical, practicable alternative location for the proposed use. And in addition, this plan, as submitted, he would testify meets the intent, goals, and objectives and standards of steep slope protection as contained in section 200-57A. He would testify that there is no adverse effect on the existing steep slopes as they will be replaced with a proposed retaining wall. Further, he would testify that it's his opinion as an expert that the grant of conditional use in this instance will not be contrary to public interest, and that it will not be detrimental to the appropriate use of adjacent properties, will not cause undue traffic congestion, will not endanger personal or property safety due to improper ingress, will not increase the danger from fire, will not overcrowd the land or create undue concentration of population, will not impair adequate supply of light and air to adjacent properties, will not adversely affect transportation or unduly burden water, sewer, school, park, or public facilities, and it will not affect the public health, morals, safety, or general welfare. Finally, Mr. Robinson would testify that it will not, this application accepted, will not in any way run counter to the spirit and purpose of this chapter. With that, that would conclude his testimony. I'd ask if there are any further questions.
Let's get him sworn in. He can confirm. So, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God. Do you confirm that the testimony as presented by your attorney is true and accurate, as if it was your testimony in full? All right, do you have any other testimony?
No. With that.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. This is the court reporter. I need him to use the microphone, please, if he's speaking.
I just said I do to both questions.
He said he does. With that, that concludes our testimony. We'd ask if the exhibits be admitted into evidence.
I do have a question. Probably for Jack. Is my understanding, and can you confirm that there would be minimum to no impact for excessive runoff, surface runoff to any of the surrounding properties? For example, Bishop Tube?
Yes. The stormwater management is actually a twofold system on this site to address stormwater not only up slope near the slope disturbance and down slope as well. And our plan does contemplate some recommendations that, that the township engineer requested us to make regarding drainage and the retaining wall. So we have that on our plan as far as the amount of disturbance within those slopes. But we are contemplating both Daryl's comments and the downstream area. One thing to note that I think that's the improvement over the past, we used to have a road up here to this site in years past. We had a road up to this, this building, as well as a separate road to, to the 9 Maillon Road tract. They are now sharing a driveway, which minimizes the impervious. So the improvement, the impervious for this site is actually going down as opposed to the same plan that was submitted about 10 years ago. Same, same building, same parking lot, but the impervious is going down due to this shared driveway, so that's one improvement as well.
How many, how much of the tree coverage is coming off this site?
We have about 15 trees coming down. Like, I actually calculated those today.
Do you know yet whether this is a spec building, or is there already a user intended?
At the moment, I believe it's a spec. I know there's some people that are interested, though. I think they feel as if we have an approval, those interested people will move fast.
Is a traffic study required at land development stage on this?
It is not, as my.
No?
Is this still envisioned to be the landscapers', or is that still the use you're thinking of, or was that at 9?
A similar use. 9 is where, is where the landscaper actually is, is engaged and is equitable, and this particular property is not. It would be, it would be that type of use.
Yeah, generally, our impact studies are triggered by a commercial building above 5,000 square feet, so the environmental impact, the traffic impact, and those types of things would be, would be submitted as part of the land development.
So this would not be required?
This would. So the total square footage here would be, it's an 8,000 square foot footprint, but it's an 11,000 square foot building, so it would be.
Oh, so it would?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay. There has to be some way to calculate the 209 fees, so.
Correct, if nothing else, yes, that.
Okay, thanks.
I guess I was thinking more of a full-blown study, but the 209, yes, would be.
Counselor, I believe you were offering exhibits and evidence?
Yes, again, which we respectfully ask that they be admitted into evidence.
We'll, we'll admit them into evidence.
And that concludes our.
All right, are there any questions from the audience? All right, seeing none at this time, we'll conclude the hearing and reconvene to the public meeting portion of the agenda. As the board is aware, you have up to 45 days to vote on this decision, or you can vote tonight, and then within the next 45 days, draft the decision. So what does the board wish to do?
I know I have a problem voting on it and following up with the decision, the written decision.
You okay with that? I'm okay with that as well. Rich, all entertain a motion?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve conditional use 10-2021 for disturbance of steep slopes at 10 South Maillon Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Zach, can you go through planning quickly?
Oh. I can go very quickly. Record time for me.
Good job, Zach.
And that's all I got.
That's the fastest? That's the fastest?
Don't jinx it.
Ted? Got to talk loud with that mask.
My turn. So, as a real quick update on property maintenance issues, on November 2, 53 Village Way actually sold, and will be getting cleaned up now. There's a dumpster already in the front yard, so it's, like, it's underway.
And if, if I recall, there is some liens on the property? Have that, has it been filed?
No, sure has been paid. The judgment, supposedly, we're waiting for a check to be mailed to us. Got to find us to keep an eye out on that one.
Okay.
So hopefully, we'll be all squared away with them. 1322 West King, they were actually served, the occupant was actually served with an eviction notice. There's a representative appointed for the guardianship of the elderly owner with dementia. They're going to be selling the house. Property will get cleaned up as well. Another one that's been crossed off the books, I guess. Going with some, a storm basin out on Matthews Road, some weeds, cars, shrubs in the right-of-way on both Carroll and Summit. Was dealing with a dumpster up on Rosemont Avenue, using to bring trash in. That has been removed. 33 Birch, we were getting complaints about a commercial business being run out of there. Points there were up to 10 trucks with the same logo on them. The neighbors were not happy with that, and they were sent a notice, and the landlord basically told them, "That's it." It happened again, so.
That's an ongoing concern on that property, isn't it?
It had, well, it was recently renovated and sold, so it hasn't been long, but over the last, I guess, month or so, maybe. So they have responded and tell me it's not going to happen again. Keep an eye, obviously. I have a junk complaint on the Buckeye Terminal property, which is an encroachment from one of the neighbors at Three Town Road. Working on that one, and he's actually working and cleaning it up. Done, and a barking dog complaint out on Lineka Stravina. That concludes property issues.
I have a question. The, the house on the Clues and Strawbridge property, isn't that a complete mess also? I can't, if we can do things about too high weeds, can't we do something about that?
We can. I know they have been noticed in the past, and they haven't taken any steps to do anything as far as protecting the structure from further decay, but certainly go after them.
I would take those steps. Yeah, 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 yeah.
We know if that property's for sale?
I think it is.
It is. I mean, that's, that's the issue, is.
We've been hearing rumors of that.
Yeah, they're not going to fix it up.
Okay, yes, and moving on, zoning hearing board applications. We have four applications for November. First is for a residence in Atwater to add a 370-square-foot patio with walkway and sitting wall. That puts them over their allowable impervious coverage. Second up is a proposal out Cameron Court, 16 Cameron Court. That's for a residential addition and a new-covered patio. Again, that puts them over their permitted building coverage. Third is an application for a special exception to allow home occupation, being an esthetician office located on Mulberry Drive, which mixed-use zoning district. Finally, an application of Lockery Mansion LLC. Finally, an application of Lockery Mansion LLC for variances from parking setback, control of glare, the required buffer plannings. They are proposing some negotiations in each of those as constructed and basically coming in for forgiveness at this point.
Ted, I have questions pertaining to these. It's gonna sound like a broken record, but in these situations, have neighbors been adequately advised of these zoning hearing board applicant permits, requirements?
They're all notified according to our ordinance. With the residential applications, it's usually the abutting neighbor's properties across the street, is what our ordinance says.
And those folks have been notified?
They will be as part of their application, I guess. They just got their notice earlier this week from the solicitor's office, and that's what goes out to them.
Okay. As long as the neighbors are being notified.
That's usually checked by zoning hearing board members and solicitors, make sure that exhibit is part of the application.
On item number three, one thing jumps out at me is with having a bit of a commercial usage there, how's the parking situation for this home office on item number three?
Obviously, parking is tight in Mulberry Drive.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, it is a townhome community, and townhomes, parking is limited for as guests. I'm not sure if both the occupants of the house are there during the day, or one's gone, and they can see a person at a time possibly. It'd be something that needs to be worked out, obviously.
Okay, thanks. Rich?
Is the Lockery two variances as a result of codes comparing the land development plan to what was built, or was it a function of someone complaining?
No, it's from being built and, I guess, suggestions along the line that he took literally without approval and approached further on the parking setback, put up different lights than what was approved. And as far as landscaping, they ran into some additional pipeline and other growth on the site, vegetation, and looking to supplement more with shrubs than some of the trees.
Okay, so they are, they have suggested a resolution?
They have suggested resolution.
Is this buffer and glare onto the Home Depot parking lot?
Not so much on the Home Depot parking lot as it would be along Lancaster Avenue, although they don't specifically abut Lancaster Avenue, their piece is kind of an island set into the Home Depot parcel, I guess.
Right. Maybe a matter of shielding and steering light versus-
He's hoping he can paint the globes to the glare.
Okay, all right.
Sue, any questions?
No, these are all pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very much.
I will read one of the shortest consent agendas that I've ever seen. And then, if there's any questions, we can discuss those. 10A, approve the meeting minutes from October 13th, our regular meeting, the October 19th Board Workshop, and the Board Workshop that occurred on October 27th. 10B, ratify payments of bills for October of 2021 in the amount of $1,413,152.85. 10C, accept the treasurer's report as of October 31st, 2021. Any questions, Sue, Rich?
None.
Anyone out there? Sue, will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Does anyone have any other business?
Public comment? You forgot public comment.
I did forget public comments.
There isn't any.
So at this point in time, meeting is adjourned.